I'd like to call the Monday, September 10th, 2018, Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting to order. And if I could ask you to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, but prior to that, I'd like a moment of silence in honor of those that we lost on September the 11th. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and I'd like to welcome all of you here tonight and those also watching. Tonight, we have the Item 1 will be the Consent Agenda, which consists of the minutes and the final plat for Blue River Family Dental. Item 2 is the Public Hearing and Rezoning for Kansas City Bobcat. Number 3 is the Public Hearing Conditional Use Permit for Dean's Performance Auto. Number 4 is the Public Hearing and Rezoning for Title Wave Auto Spa. Item 5 is the Public Hearing Conditional Use Permit, also for Title Wave Auto Spa. Item 6 is the Public Hearing Rezoning for the Gardens at Chapman Farms. Item 7 is the Public Hearing Amended Plan, Unit Concept Plan, for Gardens at Chapman Farms. Item 8 is the Preliminary Plat for the Gardens at Chapman Farms, with number 9, Other Business, and then followed by Adjournments. So with that, I would entertain a motion. Now with the final plat, we will have the Blue River, so if you make a motion, we would need to add the five conditions to the Blue River Family Dental on the final plat. So with that, I would entertain a motion for the Consent Agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Billups?
I would move for approval of the Consent Agenda with the five conditions on the final plat.
So do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. Okay, that motion has carried to approve the minutes in the final plat, Blue River Family Dental, with the five conditions, which will be heard on the City Council October 1st at 6:00 PM. We'll go now to the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Let me give you the instructions on our public hearings for this evening. This will apply to all of them. I will open the public hearing, call from the exhibits from our attorney. The staff will make their presentation. I'll call for the applicant to make their presentation. Call for any witnesses in favor, those also opposed. We'll have general discussion by the commissioners, followed by closing the public hearing, at which time we will vote. So now I will call the public hearing for the Kansas City Bobcat rezoning, and ask for the city attorney to read the exhibits.
Madam Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit 1, Staff Report with Attachments. 2, Affidavit of Publication in the Examiner on August 25, 2018. 3, Application with Attachments. 4, 185-foot Notification Map. 5, Names and Addresses of Property Owners Within 185 Feet of the Site. 6, Copy of the Letter Sent to Said Property Owners. 7, Title 4 Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by Reference. And 8, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by Reference.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jury.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. Before you today is the request from Casey Bobcat, Randy Vickers with SB Ventures LLC, on behalf of Alan Swerengen, the property owner, requesting to rezone this property located currently in the county, but they are, they have applied for annexation, and that was heard at the last council meeting, and a second hearing will be heard at the next council meeting, on September 24th actually, on the special council meeting. But they are requesting to rezone from Jackson County's Ag Zoning to LI ADPO, which is Light Industrial Adams Dairy Parkway Overlay. The property is approximately six acres, located on the south side of 40 Highway, about 1,500 feet east of southeast Adams Dairy Parkway. It's proposed as one lot, and Casey Bobcat is proposing to develop the lot for its, to move its current use along 40 Highway over, which their current use is outdoor equipment, sales, and service. If it is rezoned to the requested LI ADPO zoning, then it will need to go through the conditional use permit as well before the outdoor sales and service equipment use is If it's annexed and rezoned, this proposal will also still need to go through preliminary plat, final plat, appearance review for the Adams Dairy Parkway Overlay, as well as the site plan and design review for the building and site development. So currently, there's, in terms of abutting zoning and land uses, 40 Highways to the north, Jackson County Ag zoning is to the south, currently undeveloped. To the east and west, there's industrial properties, light industrial, ADPO overlay to the east, and then to the west, it's heavy industrial, ADPO. In the staff report, there's a table showing that if zoned to the ADPO, or Adams Dairy Parkway Overlay, everything in LI, in bold here, is actually, everything allowed in the light industrial under the current code would then become a conditional use, whether it's a conditional use already or permitted by right. And that would include their proposed use. And then, here's a table showing some of the common uses allowed in light industrial zoning, which does include outdoor sales and service of equipment, which is allowed in the light industrial zoning district, not a conditional use. So the staff does believe that the proposed zoning district will be compatible with properties in the surrounding area, and it is consistent with the 2014 Comprehensive Plan. Adjacent properties to the east and west are also industrial in nature. US-40 provides adequate access for industrial zone property. Moreover, this property is located near the Adams Dairy Parkway Corridor, so the ADPO Adams Dairy Parkway Overlay designation is consistent with past precedents. As for land use impacts, US-40 Highway acts as a buffer to the north, and the existing railroad and large flood plain to the south also act as a buffer. And then similar land uses are located east and west, and so there's, there will be minimum, minimal impact in terms of land use impacts to the east and west. So with that, staff does believe that the rezoning request is consistent with the review criteria noted in the UDC, and staff recommends approval of this application. Without also any questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Thank you. Hearing none, would the applicant like to come forward? And you will need to be sworn in. Thank you.
Jeremy Powell with Powell COWM, Inc., 3200 South State Route 291 in Independence, Missouri. I'm here on behalf of the owner and the applicant, and I can answer any questions you guys may have for them.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Perfect, thanks.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, she did have one.
I'm sorry, I just had a question. Where will the driveway be that goes onto 40 Highway?
There will be a private drive on the east side, as he's pointing out, Nathan's pointing out there, that will come back and serve both this property, the Direct TV, along with the remaining property.
Okay, so that is going to be east of where the stoplight is, right?
Correct. The nearest stoplight is Adams Dairy.
Will that cause any traffic congestion getting rented?
Actually, it should increase, improve the entrance. Right now, there's a gravel drive that is being utilized by the Direct TV. We have spoke to MoDOT, and they are accepting this entrance location.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none, is there any other discussion? Then I would entertain a motion for the public hearing for, oh, I've got to close it, sorry. I closed the public hearing. Thank you. All right, now I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair. My motion to approve public hearing rezoning Kansas City Bobcat, RZ08186516, to be approved.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Yes.
Commissioner Duhan? All right, this will be a roll call?
Planning Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duhan?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
Aye.
All right, the motion carried for Kansas City Bobcat public hearing rezoning, that will be heard at the City Council September the 24th, by the way, and they do meet at 6 o'clock. All right, now I will open the public hearing, conditional use for Dean's Performance Auto, and ask for this attorney to please read the exhibits.
Madam Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit 1, Staff Report with Attachments. 2, Affidavit of Publication in the Examiner on August 25, 2018. 3, Application with Attachments. 4, 185-foot Notification Map. 5, Names and Addresses of Property Owners Within 185 Feet of the Site. 6, Copy of the Letter Sent to Said Property Owners. 7, Title 4 Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by Reference. And 8, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by Reference.
Okay. Mr. Jury again? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. Before you today, the applicant, Timothy Troyer with Dean's Performance Automotive, on behalf of Frank and Lisa Thompson, the property owner, are requesting a conditional use permit to allow outdoor sales and service of equipment, as well as their accessory uses of vehicle repair limited in general, on a property addressed 2700 Northwest-South Outer Road. It's on the south side of Northwest-South Outer, about 2,000 feet west of 22nd Street. It's about .88 acres, and was recently rezoned, you heard this previously, at a prior Planning Commission meeting, is recently rezoned to RC, or Regional Commercial, which does allow vehicle sales with a conditional use permit, thus why we're hearing this today. Currently, there is an office, insurance office building, located in the front part of the existing building, and back in 2014, Planning Commission approved vehicle repair business to be located in the accessory building behind the main building. But now they're looking at, Dean's Performance Auto is looking to expand their business and get into the vehicle sales, as well as expanding their vehicle repair to general and limited, also taking up a portion of the back part of the building, the main building, which I'll show here. So the vehicle sales area will be a few parallel parking, or five parallel parking spots along the east portion of the property. The car repair will be approximately 2,500 square feet of the existing main building, and the vehicle repair general will also, or the body shop area, will be in the accessory building behind the main building. There are no building improvements proposed at this time. This is a change in use, and according to the UDC, when a property undergoes change in use, site improvements are required to be brought into conformance with the current development standards, which include parking, loading, landscaping, screening, and lighting, which I'll get into each of those here in a little bit. For some site details, to the north is Northwest-South Outer Road. To the south, there is residential, Zone 2 family. And then to the east and west, general business, just general commercial properties. There is a vehicle repair limited, already approved, Blue Springs Custom, to the west of this site. So I'll go through a little bit of the, some of the more pertinent use standards that are applicable to the vehicle sales and repair uses. So one of those is, if an applicant intends to remain open for business past 10:00 PM, city may require a buffer to be located between the business and any residential zone property. It is located next to residential property, but there is a significant hill and existing landscape on the south side of this property, and staff believes that this large hill and the existing landscaping will provide any buff, beyond any buffering that is typically required in any other situation. Also, applicants shall indicate whether a said business will sell alcoholic beverages, maintain video games for use by customers, sell prepared food for consumption on the premises or off the premises, providing, if they will provide car washing services, performing mechanical repairs, and/or providing automatic teller machines or grocery items to customers. The applicant did indicate that they will provide repair, and also they will sell vehicles, and they will also maintain a customer waiting area in the back portion of the main building, where their vehicle repair is going to be located. But they did not state if any of the services or products will be provided. Staff does recommend that applicant indicate at this meeting the services and products that will be provided to customers onsite and/or within the waiting area. Another use standard, there is a parking, or a paving area setback of 10 feet from general business zoning. The property to the east of this is zone general business, but however, this pre-existing pavement along the eastern portion of the property is pre-existing and can remain as a legal non-conforming pavement area. There's also a driveway maximum width for the total of all driveways on the lot, there's only one in this instance. The total driveway width shall not exceed 20% of the road frontage. This, this existing driveway takes up approximately 20% of the frontage. But again, this is a pre-existing condition, and any smaller driveway would make it difficult for two cars to maneuver, so staff does recommend that they are allowed to keep that driveway as well. As far as parking, the proposal does show 18 parking spaces striped currently that are not designated as vehicle sales area. So there's currently 18 customer parking area, or customer parking spaces proposed. Looking at the requirements, they are required to have 21 spaces when you calculate the office and the vehicle sales that is located on site. So staff does recommend that the site must provide the required number of parking spaces, which must be striped and located on a hard, dust-free surface. As far as landscaping, staff did approximate the existing landscaping in the field, and with all of the existing trees along the south and the western borders of the site, staff does believe there's enough plant units to meet the total requirement, even though there are a few areas, specifically in the north, and then the east, and also in the parking area, that are deficient, but overall, the number of plant units that staff counted on site more than exceeded the total amount required. Beyond that, staff does recommend that prior to final decision by Planning Commission, the applicant should indicate the services and products that are provided to customers onsite and within the waiting area, as required by the UDC. And if no concerns arise from this statement of, or what they indicate, the staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit application, subject to four conditions. One of those, yeah, one of those being the parking space requirement to provide 21 spaces. So if there are any questions, I'll stand for any.
Are there any questions for Mr. Jury? Hearing none, I mean, would the applicant like to come forward? You'll need to be sworn in.
My name is Jesse Crooks from Dean's Performance.
You want to speak into the microphone?
Sorry. Yeah, my name is Jesse Crooks from Dean's Performance. I'm Tim's business partner. I'm speaking on behalf of Tim Troyer and Frank Thompson, the landowner. If you guys have any questions?
Okay, he had mentioned the, what hours do you know, the hours that you'll be open?
I will be open 9 to 5.
9 to 5?
Yeah. And also, I heard him ask for like, what would be providing in the waiting room? We would just have like bottles of water, like complimentary for the guests while they're waiting.
Okay. And you think, I'm sorry, Commissioners, on the 18 parking, it required 21, do you have a situation where we could have the, I don't know if 21 will fit?
Yeah, so there's two garage doors on the detached building. There's a space for one in between those, and also on the warehouse portion of the main building, there's another spot. And then on the east side of the detached building, there's space for another one up front from those parallel parking spots that are already striped. So that'll get us to right, right at 21.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Yes, Commissioner?
I'm wondering about some kind of plantings on the front along the road. I know you meet the standard for the total plant units, but I guess I would like to see some kind of planting on the front.
Yeah, there's landscaping going all up and down the front of his building. Frank's in the front of the insurance building. And back in 2014, they added two trees and a berm on the...
North side?
Yeah, northeast side of that little grass spot, if we could get the map back up there. On that little grass, south of the sidewalk. And then on the north side of the sidewalk, they have a bunch of power lines and telephone lines and stuff going, so they didn't recommend us planting anything on the north side of the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anything else?
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just to clarify, you will not be selling any kind of products in the waiting area or anything like that?
No, just car sales.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Is there any other further discussion among the Commissioners? Okay, I'm gonna, oh, witnesses. Are there any witnesses in, sorry, in favor? Any witnesses opposed? Hearing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Entertained a motion on the Dean's Performance Public Hearing Conditional Use Permit does have four conditions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner?
I would move for approval of conditional use permit, CUP 08186543, for Dean's Performance Auto with the four conditions.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Casey, this will be a roll call?
Planning Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duhan?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
Aye. That motion carried, that was the public hearing conditional use for Dean's Performance with the four conditions. That brings us to Item 4 and 5. Okay, that's the public hearing for Title Wave rezoning, and also the conditional use. I'll open both, those will be heard together, and then we will vote separately. So I'll bring, open the hearing for the public, the hearing for the rezoning for Title Wave Auto Spa, and also the public conditional use permit for Title Wave Auto Spa. And staff, with our attorney, please read the exhibits for each.
Yes, Madam Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record for Item Number 4 on the agenda rezoning, RZ08186529. Exhibit 1, Staff Report with Attachments. 2, Affidavit of Publication in the Examiner on August 25, 2018. 3, Application with Attachments. 4, 185-foot Notification Map. 5, Names and Addresses of Property Owners Within 185 Feet of the Site. 6, Copy of the Letter Sent to Said Property Owners. 7, Title 4 Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by Reference. 8, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by Reference. 9, Written Rezoning Narrative from the applicant, and I'm adding, I have marked Exhibit Number 10, which is a PowerPoint presentation, and we have a paper copy of it, to the commission.
Okay. All right.
That's all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jury?
And, Your Honor, if I can go ahead and offer the exhibits on the conditional use permit?
Okay. Yes, thank you.
That would be for Item Number 5 on the agenda, Conditional Use Permit, CUP 08186528. Exhibit 1, Staff Report with Attachments. Exhibit 2, Affidavit of Publication in the Examiner on August 25, 2018. 3, Application with Attachments. 4, 185-foot Notification Map. 5, Names and Addresses of Property Owners Within 185 Feet of the Site. 6, Copy of the Letter Sent to Said Property Owners. 7, Title 4 Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by Reference. 8, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by Reference. 9, Written Conditional Use Permit Narrative from the applicant. 10, Request for Landscape Buffer Reduction. 11, Off-Street Parking Study. 12, Email from Chris Sandy, Public Works Director, concerning access. And Exhibit 13, which I've just marked, another, the same PowerPoint presentation, and I have a paper copy that I will hand to you.
Okay, thank you. Now, Mr. Jury, would you like to present both of those together?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Before you is the request to rezone property from GB, General Business and Light Industrial, to the requested RC, Regional Commercial. This request is coming from Thomas Wells with TW Makin on behalf of QuickTrip Corporation, who is the property owner. It's located, currently addressed at 727 Southwest Westbound US-40 Highway, and it's generally located north of 40 Highway, about 500 feet west of Southwest 7 Highway. The proposed site does cover 1.25 acres, and on the site plan, I'll clarify a little bit of that, but it is one proposed lot that they're looking at currently. The application shows the three tracts that eventually they're looking at developing, but tonight, we're just focused on Track A, which is being requested for the rezoning, as well as the conditional use permit. And I highlighted that in red here, just to clarify that this is the only portion that we're addressing tonight. Currently, there is a vacant building, vacant restaurant that used to be the old Ponderosa Steakhouse on the property, but they will be demolishing that and redeveloping the site if approvals are obtained. Redeveloping the site to include a 3,400, approximately square foot, automatic car wash building, and 34 self-service vacuum stalls. This may, this application may... This may, this application may sound somewhat familiar, because about a year ago, the applicant submitted and withdrew on the application due to concerns about the traffic and the access location between MoDOT and Public Works. And all of that, I believe, has been ironed out, as that email from Chris Sandy referenced previously has shown. If, if this conditional use and rezoning is approved, the applicant will still have to go through preliminary plat, final plat, and site plan design review before they can begin construction on this property. Around the site, there is Light Industrial to the north, FIC currently resides there. To the south is Arterial Road, US 40 Highway. To the east and to the west, there is Light Industrial and General Business, and there's just a vestige of an old zoning district that was laid across, that was laid across the property line, as you can see. And I will mention that later down the road, if, if the property just to the west of this track A develops as an oil and loop as they showed, that is allowed in vehicle repair, or in general business zoning, as a vehicle repair loop use with conditional use permit. But today, again, we're just talking about the car wash use. For the rezoning application, staff report does provide a table here that shows some of the common uses allowed in the RC zoning district, specifically the car wash, which is a conditional use in the requested RC zoning. Further on the rezoning, staff does believe that this proposed rezoning is compatible with the other, the other automobile oriented businesses located at this corner of two regional highways, being US 40 Highway and 7 Highway. This will not set a bad precedent, because council has approved other regional commercial zoning districts along 40 Highway. And staff also believes this request furthers the intent of both the comprehensive plan and the regional commercial zoning district. So that, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning. As far as the conditional use permit request, again, Thomas Wells with TW Makin on behalf of QuickTrip property owner, requested conditional use approval for a car wash on this site, which covers the exact same area as the rezoning. The only use standard that the UDC does have for car washes, the service bays and other vehicle use areas shall not, shall be designed so that they do not face any residential uses. Subject property does not face any residential use, so, or residential properties, so this does not apply in this instance. Also, I will mention that the applicant stated in a letter that the business hours will be 8:00 AM to sunset, which is compatible with some of the surrounding uses in the Vehicle access, which was an issue previously, has been vetted by MoDOT and Public Works. And the access will, is required to be off-site from track A, but it'll come up along, in between tracks B and C, and the, for the car wash itself, will come up to the north side of the property, wrap around all the way to the eastern side, go through the car wash itself before it ventures back out towards the vacuum stalls and back to the access drive that's off of 40 Highway. This property will need access easements across tracks B and C in order to have access as approved by, or as vetted by MoDOT and Public Works. For parking, there is actually no parking requirement for car washes, there's just this stacking requirement. And this property does, or this proposal does need the stacking requirement of six spaces before the entrance, and they also do provide well over six, this requires six spaces on track B, again, which will need an access easement if this property is going to use that as their access drive. They are also providing 34 vacuum stalls on the property. There will be, I believe, eight on the western side, 16 in the center, 24, and then I believe 10 on that northern section right there. They are providing also the required ADA compliance parking spaces, as well as some bike stalls, or a bike stall that is off of the required public sidewalk along 40 As far as landscaping, I'll mention briefly, they are short in a few places, but this will be addressed later on as part of the site plan design review process. And then, building design, screening, and lighting will also be addressed during the site plan design review process, but the applicant did provide some renderings and elevations of the proposed building, which I'll go through here just now. They do have some transparency, which is required for pad site buildings. Regardless, staff does believe that the requirements can be met, setbacks and everything for the required building design. So with that, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use application, subject to five conditions. One of those being that approval of this CUP is rescinded if the request to rezone the property to RC is denied by city council, just in case. So I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Mr. Billups?
Yes. I understand that we're only talking about lot A for the rezoning today, but since we've got the whole plot here, and I'm trying to get my bearings as to exactly what this part Lot, is it lot C? Yeah. Is, is that where the current tool company is? And is that then gonna come down also, in addition to the vacant building?
Correct, yeah. As part of the agreements between MoDOT and the applicant, they needed to provide a straighter access point that came at more at a perpendicular angle to 40 Highway, and in doing so, that did require them to acquire the Clark Tools property, which is shown, I think, partially on, if not completely on track C, maybe part of track B. But the proposed detention area will also be located where the existing building is, and so that'll be part of this, the site plan design review process, they'll have to provide the stormwater requirements for that.
Okay, and, and I know this is not necessarily relevant to what we're doing today, but do you know what's going to happen to that business? Are they gonna?
The applicant might be able to answer that.
I hate, I hate for us to do something and lose a business in the process. So, okay, thank you.
Are there any, Commissioner?
Is that Serpentine driveway, that access?
This one?
To the QuickTrip? Yeah.
Correct, yeah, that's QuickTrip's access and...
New Grays?
Yeah, and through the negotiations, I believe applicant, or QuickTrip was adamant about keeping that access there.
Are there any other car washes along that strip of 40 Highway right now?
There's one at Little Blue Parkway, 40 Highway.
I was just curious if that...
There's a few along 7 Highway, Mirror Walk, Car Wash, and so on.
I was just curious if they were also zoned RC, or if they had a different designation.
Some of those might, some of the older car washes might be in existing general business zoning, because I think it's somewhere in the 2000s where we moved the car wash use into the RC zoning district, and we actually created a whole new district, zoning district, which was the RC.
And then one north on 19th?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's one on 19th.
Manual, manual car wash.
On north 19th.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Would the applicant like to come forward? Oh, yes.
I did.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission...
I need your name and address.
Aaron March with the White Goss Law Firm, address 4510 Bellevue in Kansas City, Missouri. Here today on behalf of Title Wave, the applicant, and the entity that has all three parcels of property under contract for the redevelopment of this site. Give me one second to figure out, here we go. We have a very brief PowerPoint presentation that I think will answer any questions, which staff didn't, and would like to thank staff. We've been working with staff since last November, not just Nathan, but Public Works and MoDOT, trying to figure out a way to make this site work so it could be developed. And we're going far beyond where we thought we would go in order to make it work, but we're the only solutions that were, would be acceptable to MoDOT and, and to city staff. The site is immediately to the west of the existing QuickTrip, northwest corner of 40 and 7 Highway. As staff has said and talked about, only the eastern portion or track A is the subject of the rezoning and the conditional use permit, but we look at it as, as comprehensive redevelopment of the entire, of the entire northern part of, of the site due west of QuickTrip. Again, it is lot A, that is a subject to the conditional use permit and the rezoning. That is the boarded up vacant Ponderosa Steakhouse, something that if we didn't have to acquire it, we wouldn't, but it is actually owned by QuickTrip, and we, it comes part with, with, with this acquisition. And then immediately to the west of that is Clark Tool. We didn't start out looking to buy a Clark Tool, but with the requirements that MoDOT was placing on us, the only way to make this site work, by us or by anybody, is to straighten out the, the access points and create a better access into the site. That requires the acquisition of the property by Clark Tool at a, at a pretty, at a pretty price. They may choose to not open up anywhere else again, or they, they certainly have the wherewithal, if this closes, to, to open up, and we'd like to see them stay in, in the city. To tell you a little bit about Title Wave, it's not just a car wash. I'd like to introduce Mr. Petty Harden, a principal with Title Wave, to tell you about the business and why we think this is an asset for the community.
And sir, you'll need to be sworn in as well. Please raise your hand.
Okay.
Name and address.
I was sworn in a minute ago.
Right. Name and address.
My name is Petty Harden, at P.O. Box 311, Thomaston, Georgia, 30286. Title Wave, we first began washing cars in 2004 out of Atlanta, Georgia. To date, we have about 30, we have 35 sites in operation, with a lot of sites under development. This site would be our 36th site if we opened it any time in the next couple of months, but we were selected back in 2009 as being the Small Business of the Year in Georgia. Our objectives as a company is to operate somewhat like the Chick-fil-A's do. You may not like their sandwiches or their waffle fries, but they run a clean facility and they have great customer service. And that's kind of our model, is the way that we like to operate. We want to provide the cleanest, greenest, and the easiest car cleaning service that's available. We do differentiate, differentiate ourselves as far as being the most attractive business in, in not only just, we don't like to compare our, our car wash facilities as far as how they look or how their landscape to other car washes. We say, in this entire community, we want to stack our business up to be the most attractive business in the community. So we take a lot of pride in that, and it doesn't come at a small price. We're, we're here for the long term to make this large investment. We do have multiple other operations that are under develop, different development stages in the Kansas City market. We've got seven locations now that we're working on, with this being one of those seven. Our operation, our hours, we did speak of a minute ago, 8:00 AM till sunset. As, in the wintertime, it gets dark earlier, we do close earlier, so that may be 5:30 in the afternoons. People generally don't feel comfortable or don't want to be outside in the dark washing their cars or vacuuming that type of thing. So another point I'd like to make is that we do recycle our water at all our locations. So if we did not recycle our water, we may use 46, 45 to 50 gallons of water if we didn't recycle it, but we do have, we have a comprehensive equipment that's come a long way and made a lot of advancements, so we're down to 15 to 20 gallons a car now with recycling the water, so that's very important to us. There's a comparison here that's noted that drive, people who wash their cars in their driveways that may leave a water hose running for 45 minutes or so while they wash their car, that would be wasting a whole lot more water than that. I would like to also mention that as, as we wash our vehicles inside this enclosed tunnel, all the water's run down into a trench. And as we, we take that water, we separate it in several tanks, we recycle what we can, but the water that is rejected or sent to the sanitary sewer, it is filtered through three different tanks, so it's not contaminated water, but it's going to the sanitary sewer. We like to be very active in the communities in which we operate. We do partner with local charities. Actually, this month, the third Friday of September every year, all of our locations donate 100% of our proceeds for that particular Friday to a charity that's designated on the front end, generally a special needs charity that our founder has, has a special needs handicap child, and that's been something that they've done, and we've done ever since our inception back in 2004, so we're looking forward to that coming up here in a few weeks. I think we've covered what we're looking at tonight, where the actual physical auto spa is located. The master redevelopment includes the other two pieces of property. I think we're gonna be a major asset in cleaning up the area as far as what sits, what sits there now versus what, what we're proposing to do. I think we already saw some of the renderings. We do use a lot of stacked stone on the corners of our buildings, a lot, a lot of glass on either sides of the tunnels, that is, about a one-inch insulated glass. We, we clean that glass every day, every night, like Chick-fil-A cleans their windows. It's very important to us for our customers to feel not claustrophobic, where there's other car wash tunnels of this type, have, have enclosed walls, and sometimes people get that claustrophobic feeling, so we like to really, it's not a very wide tunnel, but by having all that glass in there, it creates an open feeling, so that's, that's part of our, our process of what we like to do. And that, that really wraps up kind of, that, the picture of our, a rendering of one of our signs, and I've looked at the, the sign ordinances in Blue Springs, we'll comply with whatever it may be. If, if that needs to be a little bit smaller or whatnot, I can assure you we'll comply with, with local sign ordinances. That kind of wraps up my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you guys have it. I really appreciate your time, I know it's a busy night for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Fairbanks?
Your rendering with the glass panels, you see people through there. You don't have, or do you have a walkway inside for the people to observe their car as it goes through the wash?
With this type of car wash, the customer actually stays in their vehicle, so they're riding through the car wash facility, and so, no, that, that they're not, there's not walking along, there's a lot of equipment, everything. And so no, that, that they're not, there's not walking along. There's a lot of equipment everything. Customers don't walk through the tunnel. They stay inside their vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Mr. Casey?
Could you clarify again what, what's going to happen to that Ponderosa building? Is that getting torn down or?
The Ponderosa building is being torn down. And if you look immediately to the left of the red line, there's, there's a parking area. That's about the location of the Ponderosa. That property is actually owned by QuickTrip. And QuickTrip said, you want a nice property, you also have to take the Ponderosa. We thought that would be enough to do this development. It turned out by transportation reasons, it wasn't. That's why we had to acquire the, the property to the left. We do own all three sites and staff and their staff report referenced that there need to be cross-access easements. If we're going to own all three sites, we'll be able to grant ourselves that cross-access easement. And just for the record, I would like to note that we do agree with the staff reports and, and the five conditions of approval, recommendation for approval on the conditional use permit.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Together now. Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Anyone would like to speak in opposition? Any further discussion among the commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I'm just a little bit concerned about this in terms of, of a trend I'm seeing in the city. On the north side at least, we've got this eyesore hotel area just north of I-70. And it's my understanding that they're looking at turning that into a car wash as well. So I'm just a little bit worried that we're going to be taking all these eyesores and turning them into car washes, which a lot of people I've spoken to are, are pretty, they, they don't want to see more car washes in the city. So I kind of just wanted to, to say that, that's the concern, the kind of a trend that I'm seeing. We're, we're getting all these old buildings and demolishing, which is good, they're eyesores. But they're all getting turned into car washes, it seems like. So I don't want to, I don't want to, I'd like to see more diversity in our business options.
Okay. Thank you for your opinion. Any other comments? All right. Before us, we have the, we're going to close the public hearing. Hearing no further discussion. And I would entertain a motion. We will make motions separately on both of these. This will be the first, it would be the public hearing rezoning for Title Wave. I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Phillips?
I would move for, that we recommend approval of the rezoning, RZ 08186529 for Title Wave Auto Spa.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it again.
Mr. Fairbanks? All right. This will be a roll call.
Plenary Commissioner Duhon?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
No.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
Aye. Okay, that will be heard at this, our recommendation will be sit, and be heard at the City Council October the 1st, and they do meet at 6:00 PM. All right? Now I would entertain a motion for the public hearing conditional use for Title Wave with the five conditions.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Phillips?
Would also move for approval of the conditional use permit, CUP 08186528 with the five staff conditions.
Do I hear a second?
I'll say it again.
Fairbanks? Roll call, please.
Plenary Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
No.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duhon?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
Aye. That motion also carried. So now we'll go on to, Ms. Granis? Pardon me? I already said that.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay.
I said that.
I apologize.
Yeah, you didn't hear me about the rezoning we heard October 1st, right? Okay, thank you. 6:00 PM. Thank you. We're just busy up here, so. Got a lot to cover. I don't know who's tired or. All right. We, we'll go on and I'll open the public hearing for the, and we will hear 6, 7, 8 together. I'll open the public hearing for the rezoning of the Gardens at Chapman Farms. amended planned unit concept plan for Chapman Farms. We'll also hear the preliminary plat for Chapman Farms. And I'll ask our city attorney to please read the exhibits for the rezoning and then the, also the concept plan.
Madam Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record for item number six on tonight's agenda, rezoning, RZ 08186538. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, affidavit of publication in the examiner on August 25, 2018. Three, application with attachments. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. Eight, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference. And nine, written narrative from the applicant. And for item number seven on tonight's agenda, amended planned unit concept plan, PUDC 08186539, I offer the following exhibits into the record. One, staff report with attachments. Two, affidavit of publication in the examiner on August 25, 2018. Three, application with attachments. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. Eight, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference. And nine, written narrative from the applicant.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Jury?
I think Chairman Banks and Commissioners. It's okay. Before you this evening, our three requests for the Gardens at Chapman Farms second plat, which covers approximately 8.27 acres of the northeast corner of Culver Road and southwest Second Street. The subject property is currently zoned GB PUD RO, which is a general business planning development with a restricted overlay. And as part of the Chapman Farms PUD, which was approved in 2004. The property was final platted as four lots under a for-sale-only plat in 2004. The applicant, Salie Real Estate Investments, is requesting to develop the property with 19 two-family lots with 38 dwelling units and four common open space tracks. The first request this evening is for rezoning of the property to TF PUD RO, which is two-family PUD restricted overlay, which would allow the development of semi-attached housing or duplexes on the property. The 2014 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map designates the property as mixed density, mixed density neighborhood, which accommodates a range of housing types at a density between five and 12 units per acre. This request is in accordance with the Future Land Use Map as, based on the housing type and the density, which is approximately 5.4 units per acre as proposed. The development is an extension of the first phase of the Gardens at Chapman Farms, the north, which consists of 108 dwelling units and 54 duplexes. Chapman Farms was approved as a master planned community in 2004 with a number of different housing types and densities throughout the development. Since the original approval in 2004, the number of approved dwelling units has decreased by more than 23%, which I noted in the table on page five of the staff report. And as part of that decrease, the primary reason for the decrease in number of units was rezoning the, more of the property into commercial uses along Seven Highway. Much of the land that was rezoned to commercial was originally planned for multifamily and higher-density single-family housing, which I have noted in the second table below. Under the 2004, for some reason the highlighter's not working, but under the 2004 PUD, you can see 1,374 units for, approved at that time, consisting of almost 36% multifamily and 64% single-family. Under the 2000, some amendments made in 2006 and 2007, that percentage had dropped. The multifamily down to 26% with 74% remaining single-family. Under what's proposed this evening, that balance would, would balance out a little bit more with an increase in the two-family, accounting for 13%, 15% for three units and over, and still maintaining almost 72% single-family. So it's still, it's below that what was approved in 2004, but still accommodates the two-family residential. Under this request, the percentage of non-single-family would increase approximately 28.5%. But again, still remain well below the original 2004 approval. Based on the Future Land Use Map, the property's location between an existing two-family development and an arterial street, which is Culver Road, as well as the original intent of the Chapman Farms PUD, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning. The second request is for a PUD concept to amend the Chapman Farms PUD for the subject property. This amendment would only cover these, this 8.27 acres. The remainder of the Chapman Farms master plan would remain intact as is. The proposed change in use does require the PUD concept to be amended to reflect the changes. Since the proposed amendment requires a rezoning, the development proposal is being reviewed under the requirements and criteria of the 2015 UDC rather than the 1996 UDC, which was what the original Chapman Farms was approved under. The 2004 PUD Concept Plan and Final Plat had four commercial lots for these properties, and you can still see those lot lines in the image above. Each lot was intended to have up to 6,300 square feet of floor area. Largely, these lots were intended for more office or service uses, not very intensive retail uses. The new request is to develop a single block with 19 duplexes totaling 38 units. All lots will access Little Garden Lane, which is the new street proposed. The main point of access will be from Second Street, which is a minor collector street that collects the duplexes and the single-family homes to the north, and then routes them down to Culver Road. A future connection has also been shown as a future ingress, egress easement at the end of the cul-de-sac for potential connection to the east. Currently, that property is zoned general business. It's not in the Chapman Farms master plan, but a separate development that is referred to as Chapman Ridge. But there is a potential future connection that could be made there depending on the use that develops at that end in the future. But for the time being, the end of the street will be constructed as a permanent cul-de-sac per engineering requirements. As part of the PUD Concept Plan, the applicant has requested a few modifications from the UDC, including excluding tracks H and I, which are the easternmost tracks on the property. H is the, the main track, and then I is the 25-foot landscape buffer along the Culver Road frontage. The purpose in excluding that from the open space calculations and the density calculations is that these two tracks could be sold off in the future as part of the, uh, future development to the east. Under this request, the site acreage is 6.94 acres as opposed to 8.27, which at 15% open space requires a minimum 1.04 acres of open space. The site has provided 1.54 acres of open space, of which 1.05 acres can be counted as active open space, which meet the open space system requirements in the UDC. To meet those requirements, the applicant has required to install an eight-foot concrete hike bike trail on Culver Road in lieu of a five-foot sidewalk. This has been done in some other locations, including along Major Road in Colonial Highlands as a way to provide public hike bike trails along collector and arterial streets. The hike bike trail must be constructed along the entire frontage, including track I, which may be developed in, or which may be part of a future development, but the frontage, including the landscape buffer, will need to be installed as part of this development. Due to the small size of the development, no other amenities are proposed at this time. Other modifications requested include removing the maximum lot width for the duplex standard lot building type of 100-foot maximum. Some of the lots, particularly in this frontage along the curve, exceed that. Some of those are 120 to 130 feet in width. Also, reducing the minimum lot size from 9,000 to 8,800 square feet. Most of that was created by the need to increase the landscape buffer on the northern lots. And then reducing the rear setbacks from 10 feet to 15 feet, kind of similar situation with the increase in the landscape buffers. And then increasing the maximum block length from 800 feet to 1,300 feet. Staff does believe that all those requested modifications are warranted by the limited access to the site as well as the perimeter of three sides of the development being landscape buffers. Therefore, the, the increase or the, the decrease in setbacks and lot sizes are really just impacting the landscape buffers. So there's already a, a buffer there that's created. Not only that, but the buffer to the north is primarily because of the zoning district. The existing duplexes in the north are actually zoned in a multifamily zoning district, even though of the same land use. The applicant is requesting to delay the installations of buffers for the north and east buffers of track H, which is this section here. The primary reason for that is currently they wouldn't be buffering anything as there's not going to be a use on that cul-de-sac. It will just be left as open space, so there wouldn't be anything to buffer between the north and the east property lines. And then the landscape, as I previously mentioned, the landscape buffer for track H, which is this track, will be developed as part of the, the rest of the track along Culver Road. So there is a consistent landscape buffer along that section. Some conceptual building renderings, elevations have been provided by the applicant. All the building elevations are single-level duplexes, each with a front-loaded, single-car garage for each unit. Building materials are a mix of masonry, lap siding and shingle siding. These are the three elevations, uh, three building elevations that the applicant provided. And then the applicant also had submitted a couple of other building elevations, another development that they have recently completed, showing a similar product, but with a little bit different design and stucco front. But again, their preferred option, they're the first three. But wanted to get any feedback that the Plating Commission has on the building design this evening. And then the third, the required landscape buffers have also been identified on the concept plan, which does show 25-foot landscape buffer along Culver Road, where there will also be berms there to provide a buffer between the street and the duplexes. The third request is for a preliminary plat, which is also shown as part of the concept plan here. The preliminary plat is for the Gardens at Chapman Farms second plat, which covers lots 55 through 73 and tracks F through I. All required public improvements shall be installed prior to the approval of the final plat, with the exception of sidewalks on buildable lots, which may be installed with development of each lot. All landscape buffers shall be installed or financially guaranteed before approval of the final plat. If financial guaranteed, if financially guaranteed, all landscape buffers must be installed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy on the first building. And then also an HOA will need to be set up to maintain the common tracks. All other engineering documents, including traffic study and stormwater drainage, if required, must be submitted and approved prior to the final plat. And staff does recommend approval of the proposed rezoning, the PUD Concept Plan subject to the five conditions in the staff report, and the preliminary plat subject to the 12 conditions in the staff report. And I'll be happy to answer, any, answer any questions you may have.
Is there any, are there, Mr. Fairbanks?
I don't know why I have a question about everything tonight. I can foresee a lot of issues with this cul-de-sac at the end of this long strip. And the only thing that I can relate to is in Country Club Gardens Cedar Court, which is off of the north outer road and Second Street. And if you drive down in there, And if you drive down in there, it's very, very, very congested. And this looks to me to be very, very, very congested. And a whole lot of people in that narrow strip. And so I'm very uncomfortable with this just because of the layout.
Are there any other... Yes, Commissioner Phillips?
I've actually got two questions here. The... You said that this is compatible with the future land use map. Is the current zoning in opposition to the current... To the future land use map? Or is it still in compliance?
Well, the zoning is still... The property was rezoned under the former UDC or the former Conference of Plan. Since the 2014 Conference of Plan was adopted, the future land use map, based on the trends at that time, have changed. So the boundary... Bring up the map here. So generally, under the future land use map that was approved in 2014, this is... Becomes the commercial boundary. So you kind of see that most of the commercial is on the west side of this property where the Walmart and the former Lowe's were proposed. And so that's pretty much how the future land use map lays out for this area. So they... Doesn't mean that the zoning couldn't remain and be developed as general business, but the Conference of Plan also would support a rezoning of this to a residential use.
And you kind of just led into my second question. The increase that you talked about in commercial space and the reduction in residential space was because there were plans put to us for two large box stores.
Yeah.
Are either of those plans still even possible?
The Walmart still does own their property. I... We have not heard from them on any plans for developing the site. The remainder of that is still for sale. But the 2007 approved plan, that layout, is still... It's still part of the concept plan. So somebody could come in there and build on that footprint.
They'd have to come to us with a site plan.
They'd have to go through a final plan and a site plan, yes.
But they could still do that. Because in the original plan, 2004 plan, that... All of that retail space was to be more of a neighborhood-type retail space as opposed to two large boxes.
Yes.
And now we're losing more of that small neighborhood retail space for two big boxes that may never come in. I... I'm uncomfortable with that. I really... Because that whole area down there at Seven and Culver is just now finally starting to redevelop and develop with the addition that Pinnacle Bank has put on the corner and the Marine store going in where the adult store used to be. There's a lot of activity down there finally, and I hate to stifle that by taking away potential retail space that now we can't address. We won't be able to do anything with, so... I'm not sure there's not really a question there. I just... My question was more about the big boxes are still on the books.
Yeah.
Even though I don't see them in the foreseeable future.
Are there any other questions for staff? I'll let the applicant come forward if you'd like to. And you also will need to be sworn in.
Tyler Sully with Sully Development, 3730 Northeast Trune Drive, Lee Summit, Missouri 64064. Happy to answer any questions you may have. I think Matt has covered most of our application.
Did you have any questions? I do have a question. I gather these are going to be rental, correct?
That is correct.
And around, what, 900 square feet or something to that effect?
Most of the units range between 1,100 and 1,200 square feet.
Okay.
Similar of the units that we had proposed for Colonial Highlands and then also Colonial Gardens that's to the west of Colonial Highlands.
And you have an idea of what rent's going to be?
In Colonial Highlands, we've got about half of those constructed now. Lease has been anywhere between 1,200 and 1,600 per month. And those are similar... Well, some of them are identical to what we've proposed here.
Well, I noticed too on these that there's not a lot of room as far as parking of guests. Now, we're going to a one-car garage with, you know, one-car garage, one place in front, that as far as having any company, it's going to be very difficult to have anybody park even in front. So I... That was just my comment that I thought... I've been through some of these that we've approved and they're built, and I'm thinking, I hope they don't have any company. So it's just my comment. Any... Yes, Commissioner?
Are these... These are basically the same units as what you've built just to the north, right?
Right.
Or have been built just to the north? I don't know if you own them or not.
Yeah, we didn't build the units to the north that are directly to the north here. They're fairly similar to those. I would probably compare these more to what we are building in Colonial Highlands and Colonial Gardens.
Based on the renderings, they look very similar.
Yeah, similar ranch style, one-car garage.
Do you have any idea what the occupancy is on those units to the north?
To the north, I believe they're fairly full. I think they maintain 90 to 95% occupancy throughout the year.
Just because the... Just seems like we're getting a lot of units like this, and I'm not sure how much demand there really is for them, but apparently there's quite a bit.
For that amount... That amount of rent?
That's in the Lee Summit School District, right?
That's... Yes, that's correct, yeah. And obviously, the development to the north of us is all in the same school district. I think it goes up to about Wyatt Road, yeah.
I think so. Okay, any other comments or questions for the applicant? Guess not.
Thank you.
Did you have anything you wanted to say?
I was just going to answer any questions you guys had.
Okay.
Engineer, sorry.
Okay. All right, well, is there anyone like to speak in favor? In opposition? Hearing now, bring it back up here. Any comments? Yes, Commissioner?
I made a comment. I'd also like to say that just across Culver, we have... And I don't want this to be taken as a negative multifamily because that's not what this is.
Right.
We have large estate lots. Yeah, they're in the county. They're not part of the city, but they are there. And to put these small units, be they multifamily or single-family detached, it wouldn't make any difference. Right adjacent to those is contrary to what we would normally do in a step-down type situation. So again, it just makes me uncomfortable.
Appreciate your comments. Anyone else like to comment? Get that out. Okay, I will close the public hearing. And I would entertain a motion. We will have motions separately for the public hearing rezoning of the gardens at Chapman Farms.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner?
I would move to recommend approval of the rezoning for the gardens at Chapman Farms,
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Casey? Okay, roll call, please.
Planning Commissioner Phillips?
For the two comments that I... For the reasons of the two comments that I made, I would vote no.
Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
No.
Commissioner Duhon?
No.
Commissioner Heaney?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
No.
Didn't pass. It was a tie. Yeah, it's a tie.
Okay. Well, we came to a tie. So... City Advice. Go to my city... Yes, ma'am.
In this instance, it'll go forward to City Council and just be noted that it was a tie vote.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay, so the public hearing rezoning was a tie, and it will go to the City Council, be heard October the first at 6:00 p.m. All right? So with that, we will go to the public hearing amended planned unit concept with the five staff conditions. I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Graham?
I would move for approval of the amended planned unit concept plan for gardens... The gardens at Chapman Farms PUD C-08-18-6539 with the five staff conditions.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Casey? All right, roll call, please.
Planning Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
No.
Commissioner Duhon?
No.
Commissioner Heaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
No.
Chairman Banks?
No.
And also is a tie. And that will also be go to the city, be heard by the City Council. Our recommendation for the City Council will also be heard October the first at 6:00 p.m. Now, we will just have a roll call of the preliminary platte for the gardens at Chapman Farms.
Madam Chair, would you like a motion?
Yes, I would. I'm ready. Make that motion. Oh, my gosh. We've got to quit having these long ones.
I would move for approval of the preliminary platte for the gardens at Chapman Farms, case PP-08-18-6540 with the 12 staff conditions.
Okay, do I hear a second?
May I ask a question?
Yes. But we didn't have a motion.
I understand. It will affect my vote. Is the preliminary platte contingent on the passage of the rezoning and the PUD?
Correct.
It is... It is not. However, if the preliminary platte is approved and the rezoning and the concept plan are denied by council in the preliminary platte, they just couldn't do anything with it.
Would become no.
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All right, we have it seconded. Now with the other... Do you want to go... This is a voice... You want to do a roll call? I would like to do a roll call, please.
Planning Commissioner Fairbanks?
No.
Commissioner Duhon?
Yes.
Commissioner Heaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
I'm going to vote aye, and I'd like to explain a little bit, please, because this is, again, what I just asked. This vote will come... Become no. And this preliminary platte is an administrative function rather than a judicial function, as we've discussed before. And it does meet all the requirements if the other two things are approved. So therefore, I'm voting aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
Aye.
Okay, preliminary platte for the garden.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Oh, you missed him.
I did.
She skipped me.
I'm not the only one that fails on things.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I was also skipped. Nope.
Okay.
Okay, let's do this again.
I'm sorry, I confused everyone.
Another roll call.
Okay, we're going to do the roll call.
One more time. Planning Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
No.
Commissioner Duhon?
Aye.
Commissioner Heaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That has been approved. That will finish our meetings, and then we have other business. How's our other business?
Currently, we do have a meeting scheduled for Monday, September 24, 2018, that will follow the special City Council meeting. The City Council meeting will start at 6 o'clock, and the Planning Commission meeting will start after that special City Council meeting. In addition, the American Planning Association By-State Conference is being held in, I believe, October 24th and 25th. And from the Planning Commission, Ms. Fairbanks and Ms. Veal will be attending that, representing the Planning Commission. That is all we have.
Is there any other downtown or anything that you want us to share?
Again, Depot Grand Opening, October 10.
Right.
There's some other stuff coming up in October downtown, but we'll talk about that later.
Okay. All right, with that, I no other further business. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, meeting is adjourned.